Warren Cottle, Carol Ross, and Stafford Barnett are here with us today. Uh, this wasn't on our original list because I wasn't looking at my calendar right, but today is Brian Pope Day.
You're welcome.
We've been, uh, we've been talking about that. Thank you to the editorial assistant that is Stafford over on the other end of the, uh, over at the end of the console.
Yeah, 'cause I get tired.
Let's just go through, uh, kinda what's your thoughts? Today is the hearing where bond could be revoked if, if I'm not mistaken, Stafford.
Let's get ready to revoke. Let's put him in jail.
Okay.
Let's hope that Brian Pope goes to jail. He's a terrible person. What more do you need? Like, hey, this guy, this guy should have been in jail a long time ago. I hope he loses this pension. I hope he loses everything. This guy is a crook. And then Brian, if you're listening, I hope at the end of the day today, you are in jail.
All right, Warren, uh, obviously this, this change of venue thing did not go the way I think his attorneys wanted it to go.
I have no idea. What, uh, what, did they not change it?
They, uh, I mean, it pretty much got a no-go unless the, unless the hearing is still to come on that, but...
Oh, yeah. Anyway, so today he has his, uh, bond hearing about getting revoked. So we'll see what happens.
Carol?
Is this in front of Jules Edwards again? Poor Jules. He's like, can you get this away from me? It's like stuck to his hand. I want this guy out of here. He hasn't even acknowledged he's done anything wrong. And I think the last time he was in Jules Edwards' court, he said, "Can you at least admit you did something wrong?", something to that effect.
Yeah.
And, uh, so I, I just want us all to be free of this. Now Bruce Conk was on one of the stations last night talking about, uh, not only, but clawing back any of the appropriation that comes from consolidated government. Um, I think it's about 1.6 million, something like that. He feels that the, uh, the office is overstaffed to begin with and that, uh, it's nowhere is it Lafayette Consolidated Government's responsibility to fund this office that he could very well, um, uh, subsist on the fees that he collects.
Oh, no, he can himself pay all the fees.
No, the office, the office could exist.
All fees with him.
The office could exist if he weren't putting them into his pocket.
All right. Well, we'll, uh, we'll follow this story, uh, throughout the day today, um, on air and on KPL965.com.
By the way, I think he's done eight hours of his hundred-plus hours community service.
That's a story.
He did that before the first hearing.
Yes.
For potential revocation. Hasn't done a single hour since.
Okay, we will follow that story throughout the day today. So the special session is underway in Baton Rouge and we are still working on, on this fiscal cliff. Uh, Carol, we'll start with you. Are we gonna sail over this fiscal cliff?
Do we have to start with me? No, let me tell you, this is a horror show. This is a real horror show. I think they did, did they do a day of reflection yesterday or something stupid like that?
They needed a day, they said.
I think they said what, a mental health break?
Yes, one legislator termed it that.
There are seven days left in this session. Five days after this session ends, there's gonna be a regular session. Does anybody believe we're gonna solve anything substantive in this special session? The governor has, and I do fault the governor mostly because from the very beginning, he said he would not call a special session unless he knew that there was a plan, that there was something they could go on. He gave lip service to the task force recommendations, the budget recommendations of the, of the task force and did nothing about that. He lied about cutting 600 million. He lied about what was gonna happen when they came into session. It's been a horror show ever since he didn't want, "No, we're not gonna raise taxes." Well, look at what they're doing. And, uh, and I'm afraid to say that there are some weak-kneed Republicans who are right in there doing it. Now you have the black delegation, the black caucus, uh, just gumming up the works. They wanna go back to the Stelly Plan. That will not fly. That was such an unpopular thing. Something rational, I, I don't hold any hope for anything rational, but I think what they'll do is take the low-hanging fruit, get, get out of there with whatever they can get out of there with. It will be a horror show when it's all over with. They're gonna come back into the regular session. And after the regular session is open, anybody wanna predict they're gonna do another special session? Cause they haven't solved a darn thing either in this special or the regular. And by the way, by the time it's all over with, we will have had, by the end of June, we will have had three regular sessions, five special sessions, and they will have caught sixty K a day, sixty thousand a day. They needed a day off. We paid them sixty thousand. They needed a day off. They haven't done anything yet. This, this legislature is not doing themselves any favor. And by the way, Steve Kalis going down there and give him a little talk too?
Yeah.
Is that a harbinger that he's gonna run for governor?
We shall see. Stafford, your thoughts?
I wouldn't be upset if that happened.
I, I, I don't agree with Carol on blaming the governor because, uh, the governor doesn't, governor doesn't write the budget. Uh, you know, we, a while back, um, Edwards got up and said, "Hey, guys, get me something that, that's balanced." And he's, he's responsible, he's, he's bound, if I'm not mistaken, constitutionally by the state of having a balanced budget. And, uh, so they put together the worst-case scenario, presented it. It was, of course, uh, massive cuts to TOPPS, massive cuts to healthcare. I think the suggested cut to healthcare was over $500 million. Uh, I wanna say it was in the $700 million range, which with the matching federal funds, that's another two and a half ba-, uh, billion dollars. So we're looking at a potential $3 billion cut to, uh, to healthcare in Louisiana. So there goes a lot of your children's services, a lot of your elderly services, a lot of your, uh, mental health, uh, services for the communities. Uh, so, uh, you know, the, I think the problem that we have at times is that, um, when we send our locals to Baton Rouge, um, we don't impress on them enough the fact that we are asking them to go there and do the hard work and not the easy work. And a lot of times, the stuff that gets passed is the easy work, right? Which I'm almost contradicting myself by the fact that they still can't get out of daylight savings time, which I think is the dumbest rule ever, right? So anyway, beyond that, uh, we, we send guys up there who, who have a spine on the campaign trail, but as soon as they get up there, it's, it seems to fall apart. So, um, I, I believe this is on the representatives. I believe that we get the government that we deserve. And if we're gonna continue to send cowards up there who can't put together a budget, uh, who can't look their constituents in the face and say, "Hey, we're paying for the sins of the past and we gotta fix it." I mean, think about roads, right? Will getting our spend per capita on roads equal with somebody who has the best roads, uh, in the United States ever get us to quality roads? The answer to that's no, because they've fallen apart so bad that we've gotta spend more than anybody else to get it fixed, right? So, uh, we need to send people up there who, who have a spine, who will get this done, uh, who, who will work together. I, I get that there's times for soundbites. I get that there's times for, that, for so many people to have partisan politics. But Republican, Democrat, Independent, I don't care where you are, if you're a representative, your responsibility is to put a budget together that works well for everybody.
All right, Warren, wrap this up for us.
Yeah, I, I think that the, the first thing I would say is that this whole scenario is, is completely insulting to every voter and every citizen of Louisiana, and it has been for a long, long, long time. You look around and virtually every problem we have in this state originates with the state legislature. Just about every single problem. This charade of the budget and the shortfalls and the financial cliff has been going on there for about twenty-something-plus years. Every damn time they meet to hu-, to get out of budget, it comes up to the same thing. They come up with smoke and mirrors. They, they, they pad the, the cost over to places where the people can't afford to pay it. Look what's happened to the college tuition. Oh, the taxes didn't go up. No, but the fees went up, the tuition went up, this went up, that went up. Where in the hell's the money going? Nobody will tell you. They won't sit there... What, they were supposed to put all those thirty thousand contracts on, on the web one time where we could see where the money was going on some of those. It stayed on there for, I said one microsecond, but I think it wound up being one picosecond.
Yeah.
And so you, this goes over and over and over. Well, they need to do their part. You got two sides. You got a governor who is extremely powerful in Louisiana, and you got a legislature who has no guts. And they sit there and they come up with a budget and the governor says, "Well, that's not gonna work. We're gonna ramrod this one down your throat." So John and Larry O and them in the Senate turn around and take the, the budget that the House put together, that had some common sense stuff to it, and says, "Shut up and go sit down. We're passing the budget." So they ramrodded their budget through, and, and the House was telling them, "Well, you get six months down the road, it's gonna fall apart just like it does every other year in Louisiana." "I don't care. That's the way it's done. And the people don't mind it. That's the way it's done. The people are too stupid to understand what we're doing. We are the smart people up here in Baton Rouge." Look at you. Most of you who went to high school, about thirty percent of you graduating, you can't even read and write. We know what we're doing. It, it's by design. You don't have jobs? You, you mad because your kids leave and go somewhere else? Well, good. Let them go somewhere else. It is absolute travesty, and we sit here and put up with it time after time after time and listen to these horror stories and these lies that come out of them about, "We're on a financial cliff and it's your fault. You're not paying enough taxes. The state is on a financial cliff." Well, by God, let it be.
Carol, you can respond. Then we'll wrap up with Stafford.
Well, first of all, uh...
Get Warren an aspirin.
First of all, the governor does have a great impact on the budget. He proposes a budget, and then what the, the legislature does with it slices and dices it, knowing full well that the governor controls, uh, a lot of the, uh, outcome. Um, so it's always a problem there, and Warren is exactly right. It gets over to the Senate. You have some really good fiscal conservatives in the House, and they do propose some good things, but by the time it gets to the Senate, it's sliced and diced and jammed at the last minute, and then you take it or leave it. And who wants to leave it, you know, after, uh, a seventeen-day special session that cost us over, oh, about four million dollars? So nobody wants to do that. The other thing is, this fiscal cliff, uh, is much of Governor John Bel Edwards' creation in his expansion of Medicaid to even able-bodied people who had private insurance. Well, if you want, I'm gonna get something free. If I can get something free from the state, I would. He expanded Medicaid by about nine hundred billion dollars and there, uh, nine hundred million dollars, and there's your fiscal cliff right there.
All right, uh, we're gonna...
Self-imposed wound.
Quickly, uh, we're gonna move on. Stafford?
Yeah, so two things. Uh, expanding Medicare, uh, in the state of Louisiana has been financed...
Medicaid.
Sorry, thank you, Medicaid, was, uh, has been proven to actually have saved lives in Louisiana. So I, I understand that people don't like it, but it was there, it was available, and we've helped some people here. Also, to the tuition, uh, points that were being brought up by Warren, the reason tuition has gone up is because of the massive cuts that we've had to higher ed, uh, under the, the, both governors, right? That there's been cuts under, under, uh, Edwards, and there was a lot of cuts under, uh, Gindel. So that's where, that's why you see the, the tuition go up as high as it is. And then we've also had some weird accounting deals where you pay more upfront and you get better tax returns and that type of stuff.
But it's still part of the same old smoke and mirrors game.
Exactly.
Yeah, they're constitutionally required to, to present a balanced budget. They had some taxes. They put together a temporary, uh, sales tax that, that was put in to, to save Louise, to, to get us through the last session in hopes that the economy would turn around and we generate some more money through sales tax. The economy has turned around a little bit. That being said, the one cent is going away. And look, we shouldn't be taxing, the money shouldn't be done on the backs of every consumer, in my opinion. That's a whole different argument. There's, we've got significantly lower taxes in other areas, but there is a fiscal cliff that's real according to the Constitution, and it's because we've given away more money than we're taking it.
All right, let's, uh, wrap it up there. Coming up, things got trashy in Lafayette and a contract that, still learning a lot about involving Republic Services. That's next on Wingin' It Wednesday. And we are back with more Wingin' It Wednesday at 7:25. The panelists all revved up in Stafford. I don't know, you're just becoming a regular. I, I think you might just be chasing the headlines, Stafford, and whatever you can do to get the news to come out to your house.
Oh, yeah.
This week it was, it was the trash. We'll let you start on this situation. Republic Services will be levied a, a pretty, uh, pretty hefty penalty for their tardiness with picking up trash.
Yeah.
Um, so what is it from your viewpoint? Will this penalty do what it's supposed to do and keep things on time?
Yes. So, uh, this was like a, a comedy of errors for, for them because it happened right after like the first really beautiful weekend that everybody had in Lafayette. So, like, I know I cleaned my garage that weekend, right? So I can't tell you how many other people did that. So I filled both my trashcans coming out of the top, right? So I'm having to like borrow neighbors' trashcans to put diaper, like diaper bags in because we've got, we've got no place to put it, right?
I know. Welcome to our world.
Yeah, welcome to, to being a father of young children. Um, and so, and, and then you think about all the people that like raked their lawns or like cleaned out their attic or like...
My next-door neighbor, uh, pruned six palm trees.
Right, right.
And we could've had Palm Sunday on my street.
And, and so, look...
All those palms out there.
The, the flu's a real deal, right? And I feel bad for the drivers that got the flu. Uh, but every business has to have contingency plans in place for situations like this. What would happen if the drivers would've unionized and striked? I mean, we, we had, you know, three to four weeks without trash collection. So we, I, I heard people calling for, uh, "I want my money back." Well, guess what? You pay about five dollars a week to get your trash dumped. So if you want your five dollars back, you can go fight for that five bucks. But their contract says, after they've missed the initial collection for 24 hours and it's been reported to LCG, every day after that, they get fined twenty-five dollars a day per house that's reported, right? So the fine that's hitting them, I'm completely okay with because it's gonna make them put systems in place to deal with these situations. And look, a simple, "Hey, the trash isn't coming. Figure something out. We're gonna be a couple of days behind via a text message," right? I, I get text messages from Arby's telling me that they're running a special on, on, on beef and cheddars, right? I don't even eat Arby's anymore.
He doesn't drop any off to us. Let's just throw that in.
I'll, I'll start forwarding you all the messages.
There you go.
Or you can dial 9979, text "beef" to...
No, we want you to start delivering.
So, so my point is, is that I think this is gonna force them to, to help themselves a little more accountable with, when they get hit, this hit to their piano.
Warren, I've never heard the word "perfect storm" used as an excuse so many times as, as this one. Um, is, is there an answer to this, or does a company really just need to figure something out?
Well, yeah, I, look, you know, these things do happen, and, and whether or not twenty-five dollars per trashcan is, is acceptable fine, I don't know. Maybe it's too much, maybe it's not enough. Stafford mentioned that the fact that someplace you don't get your trash picked up for days. Well, uh, Google East St. Louis, Illinois and see what a town looks like where they don't have trash collection now going on for years. And, uh, and, and, you know, you're talking about dysfunctional place, and that's kinda what the state of Louisiana is headed for on these financial and physical cliffs. When you keep reducing your tax base, keep reducing it, keep reducing it, and pouring more and more money out there through graph corruption and whatever, then you wind up with East St. Louis, Illinois. And, and that, um, you know, and, and at one time, oh, it was years ago, but the garbage just piled up. It was just like one big garbage pile. So anyway, that, we don't want that to happen. Uh, I think over and, over and all that, that Republic Park, uh, Republic, uh, garbage does a, does a pretty decent job. One of the things I would really like to see Lafayette Consolidated Government do, and that is pick up the damn dead animals on the road. You know, here a while back, you go down the thruway, and there were two big old dogs right there on the, on the thruway, right by the curb. Both of them with their legs sticking out, all swollen up, ready to pop. And, I mean, you know, and how disgusting is that when you got a town like this and you can, people are coming through here, looking around, whether they wanna move here, they wanna locate a business here, whatever. You got six opossums dead over on this side. You got three armadillos on the other side. And that is why the chicken crossed the road, by the way, was to prove to the opossum and armadillo that it could be done. But you turn around there, and even people whose pets get run over in front of the house won't even pick them up.
There's no, there's no collection anymore. They tell you to go out there, pick it up, and put it in your trash.
Well, as, as of when?
The last time I called, that's what they told me to do.
They have, I was told, I was...
Well, maybe there's something new. I don't know. I haven't, I haven't picked up a dead animal in a while.
Because, because they just ran a story about, like, finding the animal graveyard off the road in...
That was in another parish.
In Carncro, though, I thought.
No, that was Carncro.
I was in Carncro, and it was the people who were collecting the animals off the roads locally.
Yeah.
Who were like, drive by with a spade shovel, just like chucking them.
Well, at least they're getting them off the road.
So Carol, would this, uh, could this ever lead to...
Was that our original topic?
Well, the trash.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, dead animals are trash too.
You know, I love the Lafayette Memories Facebook page because there's always different things. And one thing that comes up often, there's a daughter of a man who had a private trash collection service in Lafayette, and everyone knew him. Like, that's, that's what he did. He had, you know, several neighbors. Uh, does this eventually ever open us up to maybe we don't have big contracts?
That might've been when he was picking up with a horse and buggy, right? Horse and wagon?
Well, I don't think he was, I don't think she's, the daughter wouldn't still be alive, Carol.
I'm teasing, uh, Rob.
But anyway, but I mean...
Look, how would you like to be the human resources manager for a trash collection company?
That's gotta be tough.
In the middle of flu season?
Yeah.
Let me just give a little empathy to the folks over at Republic, cause really and truly, the only reason this stands out is cause it happens so rarely, and that's, that's a good thing. It happens so rarely. So I, I'm gonna cut him a little slack on this one because it was, uh, there were a lot of extenuating circumstances. Um, and, and by the way, you know, we have a lot of environmentalists, there are people who give the environmental program, uh, and, and philosophy, um, uh, you know, great lip service. So pick up your own trash for a while, you know, and, and do something with it. Take it to the landfill, whatever. I mean, I, I'm just, I'm making a stupid joke about that. But, I mean, really, what, what is a, what does a company like that do? Who, who wants to work on a garbage truck anyway? How do they keep people working on a garbage truck? How do they keep them healthy dealing with all of, you know, whatever they deal with? Uh, I, I'm just gonna give them a little pass on this one. I know it was, uh, frustrating to, uh, to a lot of people. Um, but, you know, we have, we had, even in River Ranch, we had to wait for pickup. So, you know, you just deal with it.
So to answer Carol's question about how you keep drivers, uh, apparently Republic, uh, I don't know if they call it a tenured driver, or once you've hit a certain amount of time with them, you make eighty to a hundred grand a year running one of those automated trucks. Yeah, so the way that they...
Goodbye.
The way that they... So, so the, so the way that...
How long do you have to go to a tenure?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I know that they're looking...
And you do have to have a certain skill level to run those trucks. And, and by the way, they don't run those trucks in River Ranch, cause the trees, the roads are too narrow and all that.
Someone does still jump off, right?
So they, yes, exactly.
No, that shouldn't be allowed. If the rest of us gotta use the big trashcans, then River Ranch should have to use them too.
I wish we did. We still do recycling with the big ones.
The arms are too loud.
I understand all of that.
And it only rains when you're napping in River Ranch.
I understand all of that.
And so they, they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna understand.
Watch out. People in River Ranch contribute a lot to this community. And by the way, it's because the trees are so...
Oh, please. And they get all the tax breaks. They get all the tax breaks. It's the back of the poor people that they have to pay all this.
I want you to do an analysis of the amount of property taxes that people in River Ranch pay, as well as the sales taxes.
I think River Ranch is beautiful. I think they contribute a lot. I'm not making a joke at their expense.
By the way, the people in River Ranch would rather have one week, once a week, pick up, just like everybody else. We would, would rather not have them put our garbage out twice a week.
Now, look, Carol, Carol, nobody has a problem with River Ranch. People just have a problem with the people who live in River Ranch.
Oh.
I never said that. I never said that.
I just want...
I'm gonna ring the bell here.
I'm gonna stop everybody. I'm gonna stop everybody.
You hear these people?
I'm trying to take Mike Stagg's place this morning.
I, I see that.
Let me tell you, people in River Ranch work very hard and are contributors to this community.
I am not saying anything.
And by the way, Robert Daigle didn't get any waivers like other people in this parish have gotten.
Why? He got all kind of waivers.
He got waivers. He did not get tax breaks. He never got a TIF. He never got a tax break.
Didn't Brian Pope live in River Ranch?
Yeah.
He did.
It's 7:34 now.
He doesn't live there anymore.
965 KPL.
You're just a little hung up about Brian Pope. He's a mess, but get over it, Stafford. They're gonna get him one way or the other.
We're moving on with Wingin' It Wednesday after this. Welcome back to Wingin' It Wednesday. Carol Ross, Warren Cottle, and Stafford Barnett gracing us with their presence as they do every week. So, uh, this morning, we have already heard that, uh, was it Dick's Sporting Goods?
Yes.
They made the decision, uh, overnight that they will stop selling assault weapons at their stores effective immediately. Um, this as controversy still kinda rolls on here in the state of Louisiana at a, a private school, the Bowling Green School in Washington Parish, planning a thirty-days, thirty-guns raffle in which thirty guns, including two AR-15 semi-automatic rifles, will be given away. Warren, we'll start with you on this one. Is it just kinda bad timing? Have anyone cared about it before? What do you think? Should it go on?
Well, are they making any money off of it?
I mean, apparently so.
Private school, huh?
Absolutely.
You go for it. You know, here's what I wanna say about the AR-15s and all that kinda such stuff, and, and we gotta do something to try to minimize these school shootings. I agree with that, which we addressed last week. And I said that the only thing, the quickest thing you can do to address it is to address the access that they have. And then we keep coming up with these, um, "Well, we need armed guards in the schools." And now, now we find out that there was one who was already stationed there who didn't have the guts to do anything, and he was backed up by three other sheriff deputies who showed up, and none of them went in there to do anything. I mean, you know, that is absolutely horrible. The one thing, and the, the one thing that I do agree with that will help stop this thing is you do have to have some kinda gun control. And I am all for that. You really do. When these situations come up, you need some serious gun control. And, uh, gun control starts with three basic principles. It's called sight alignment, sight picture, and trigger squeeze. And until you've got some people there who are willing to step in there and do what they need to do and kill that perpetrator and get him killed as quickly as possible, then these things will keep going on. And, uh, I don't know that we need, you know, will, will armed teachers do the job? I don't know, but you need to do something, cause this thing is not working. Well, we have sat there and said, "Okay, okay, that we know, no guns allowed on this school property." Oh, God, then. You're gonna, you know, you're a little nut out there. You wanna go kill some people and have your fifteen minutes claim to fame? Then what's the place to go to? Where there will be no guns, no armed guards, none of that. So, you know, in this school, the, the AR-15, I particularly don't care for the thing. I'm an M-14 man myself, and I don't own one, but, you know, if they wanna raffle the thing off, as long as the winner is, uh, gets a clean quote bill of health from the FBI. I can't give you a clean bill of health because they're not clean themselves, but, you know, but if, but if you're legal on it, then fine. Their, their school, their rifle, go for it.
Your thoughts? Carol?
Well, frankly, I, I don't, they have every right to do it. They really do. And, uh, they, apparently the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms said that, uh, it, they comply, they're complying. Uh, are they, are they gonna do background checks on, I mean, how, how do you implement that?
It's all within the...
It's all within, so it's all legal. So, hey, I don't have any problem with something that's totally legal, totally controlled. The school wants to do it. It's part of the culture. Um, you know, I do think we do have to have something. We need to harden up these targets. When you just flashing sign, "Gun-free zone," hey, who's gonna take advantage of that? Some coward who, with a gun. Um, there are a lot of things around, that they can nibble around the edges, but the fact of the matter is, we have a Second Amendment right to own, to keep and bear arms. And if you look at our history, you understand why that should not be abrogated. That should not be taken away from us. It's really critical. Uh, can we make the soft targets harder? Did you see the story last night about the pastors who are actually doing these things around Lafayette? They've had meetings with the police chief.
We've been on the front of that.
You've been, you've been there, right? So, uh, so they're all becoming much more aware of how to keep these softer targets safe. A gun, I mean, I don't think it's the best idea in the world to have a gun raffle, gun raffle, but they have every right to do it as long as they're following the law.
All right, Stafford, wrap this one up.
Uh, the reality about those, those gun raffles is that they are really strong fundraising tools. Um, the, the Ducks, Ducks Unlimited does it, uh, a year of guns, where you buy their calendar and, you know, you, you get in it and an opportunity to win some, some firearms. Um, I, I struggle with the, the arguments with gun control, with, with ARs, because there really isn't a good, proper definition of, of assault weapon, right? And it's a semi-automatic rifle.
I wanna say, and tons of people think the AR means automatic rifle, and that is not what it means.
Assault rifle.
There's, there's so much bad nomenclature being used with, with all this stuff. And while I agree with Carol when she says the, the "shall not be infringed" argument, that we, we do have some infringement already built in. We, we can't buy tunnel-hump missiles or nuclear weapons, but we also can't, without an FFL, buy a fully-automatic weapon. Um, and I don't know that the solution is, uh, classifying semi-automatic rifles into the same classification that you have fully-auto, um, through the FFL process. So, you know, we have, the, the guy who had red jacket besides being a pedophile lost his FFL license because the feds showed up and fully-automatic weapons that he had under his trust weren't there. And that's a kind of accountability at times you would hope that we could get on some of these weapons. But at the same time, I, I struggle with what else are we giving up when we do that kinda stuff? So I think that, that, uh, the gun raffle, while being effective for this school, and it's their decision, my personal opinion, having the ARs on there at this time, it may be, it may be in poor taste. Uh, I think that they could easily pull one of those out and put some nice hunting shotguns or a hunting rifle in, and, and people will say, "ARs are hunting rifles?" Well, not, that, yes, you can hunt varmints with them, but, uh, with, when it comes to deer, you're limited by your magazine capacity. You can't have more than X amount of rounds in a gun that, and that weapon can hold a lot. So, um, I don't know what the solution is. I, I wasn't here last week. I did the discussion with you guys. I, I know that, uh, that I'm, I'm personally, I'm tired of seeing, you know, uh, kids getting marched out of schools, cause, cause kids are dying. And, uh, and I struggle with what happens when I send my kids to school. You know, we've had something happen here. We had, we had two people get shot in a movie theater here, you know, so it's touched home before.
Carol, you can wrap this one up.
Well, you know, that, it's true. The nomenclature has a lot to do with it. You call things assault weapon. Anything could be, a car could be in the, in the wrong hands, an assault weapon, a knife. In fact, there are more people killed by knives, uh, than, than guns, by far, far more killed by knives than guns. So anything can be an assault weapon. The AR-15 has just gotten a bad reputation. It is very widely owned. I mean, it is very widely owned. I, I looked at buying one one time, a long time ago. I mean, it is a sweet-looking gun. I mean, really and truly, I can see why it's very popular. But, um, you know, it's, uh, this is, this is a tricky, slippery slope. If you remember back in the early days, I wasn't there, but I've been reading about it, you know, back in 1774, uh, when the British took away the guns. And that is one of the things that precipitated our revolution. So, uh, I would tread lightly on taking away any more gun rights. Do we need to put qualifiers and limitations? And we have, and we will continue to do so, but let's do it rationally. Bump stocks. I, I totally agree with that. I think the NRA even agrees with doing away with the bump stocks. That's... But this, this age issue, um, I don't see why a young person can vote, uh, they can fight for their family, uh, for their, for their country, and, uh, in some cases, they can't buy a handgun, but they can buy a rifle.
They can't drink.
There's no rational thing.
They can't, they can't drink.
Uh, Warren, you can actually, uh, get the last word on this.
I'll just say one thing about the age limit, you know, that, that I am all in favor of raising the age limit, but raise it across the board, you know? You know, that you can't join the military, you're not allowed to contract, and, and all of those things, you know, that people live so much longer today than what they used to live. You know, you're gonna be productive probably well into your 80s. Some of these kids being born today, probably gonna be productive into their 90s. And so, you know, to say that at 18 is when you have to become, quote, "an adult," I think we need to give about another three years to, to...
To mature.
To mature, and then that, you know, but I really and truly think if you're gonna do that, then it needs to be done, quote, "for everything."
You know, and it's funny, Caleb, who comes in here on Friday mornings from Barney's, he, you know, he mentioned the same exact thing. Decide what you want it to be.
Yeah, just make it consistent.
But the extra regulation kind of everywhere makes it confusing. All right, it's 7:49 now. We're gonna come back in the final segment of Wingin' It Wednesday. Just ahead, as Louisiana finds itself on the bottom of another good list, and even Mississippi beat us. Man. All right, we're back after this. Oh, the most trusted source of news. 7:51 now at News Talk 96.5 KPAL. This is Wingin' It Wednesday, February 28th, 2018. So, a new study, new survey, I guess, of places to live, best and worst, and Louisiana is number 50. Carol, do we even care about this? The governor says it's outdated information, and, and they're wrong.
Well, governor would say that, but, I mean, there are some things to be learned from this, some things to be learned from this. But if you look at the individual rankings, like on crime, crime and corrections were 48, we're not the bottom there. Economy, 44, amazing. Education, 49, we're not on the bottom there. Fiscal stability, 48. Healthcare, 47. Infrastructure, 44. How they got up to 44 on infrastructure is beyond me. Opportunity, this is the key, 50. We're dead last in opportunity. Quality of life, 42. And by the way, let me just share with you who are at the top of the list. And you, you tell me if you would live in any of these states. Iowa, Minnesota, Utah, North Dakota, and New Hampshire.
All I'm good places.
I don't know. I don't know about that.
Minnesota's pretty nice. New Hampshire's pretty nice.
They may be nice, but they don't have the people, the food, the culture, sorry. They just don't have that. In evaluating the best states, they said they combined a lot of different data. Well, you know, there's, there's an, let me see, there's an indefinable quality in Louisiana that, that I think the metrics fail to identify and appreciate, and I would say that's the people. The people here in the culture, the music, the food, there's a lot more to it. Do I wish we could get our act together on all those other things? Oh, yeah, in a heartbeat. And I don't take it lightly that we continually rank where we are in these listings. There's a reason that we do, that we need to get a little more serious, a lot more serious about solving our problems and stop fighting each other. And, and what did we have, Bernie, yesterday? We had a mental health day at the legislature? We did. Do you think it's gonna have any, any salutary effect?
Probably not on this list.
They're still gonna be fighting.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I thought, too.
So, Stafford, you work here in our area, but you work for a company that has customers nationwide.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's, it's kind of in your purview each and every day, what people are doing in different states. What is your kind of feedback or view on this study?
We, well, there's a couple of things, okay? So, I think that, that you get the government and the society that you deserve. And we, we have people in our communities, because we do have a lower level of education when it comes to the, the rest of the United States, we have a lower graduation rate, that believe a lot of bad info. I can't tell you how many people believe this idea that, that we're the most taxed state in the, in the United States. Carol, Carol said two weeks ago that, that California had the most income disparity in the, in the United States. Carol's not even, California's not even in the top 10. Louisiana is the top 6, right? And we have all these bad things that happen to us because we are bad at sending people up there to tackle the hard problems, right? We go, "Why is there no opportunity?" We had the lowest per capita requirement for college education jobs in the United States. And then we turn around and we cut education, right? And one of the things, the big bonuses that we had from, from the tobacco settlement was TOPPS. And we were graduating all these kids from college, and then we were losing them. And we coined the term "boomerang." We, where kids were having to leave the state to go get their initial education and their degrees, and then we were trying to catch them before they had kids. If we could catch them, because there are no entry-level jobs here, but there were jobs past entry level here, if we could catch them and get them back, we might get them back to Louisiana.